Good evening and welcome to the Personnel Committee meeting. Today is Monday, February 24th. It is now 5:46 PM. Apologies for the tardiness. Just got here straight from work. Voting members to my right, I have Counselor Anna Levy. To my left, Counselor Fede Nina Santiago. And shortly, we will have Counselor and Vice Chair Wendy Luzon joining us. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting of the Personnel Committee is being conducted both in person and via remote participation. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may either attend here in the City Council Chamber or use any of our social media accounts. At this point, can you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, can I have a motion to approve minutes from our meeting, from the meeting of February 13th, 2025? Motion has been made properly seconded in discussion on the minutes. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, the ayes have it. First item under new business, we have item 49-25, Authorization to fill enhancement prosecutor position, Ordinance number 02.72.050 in inspectional services. It has been vacant for more than six months. And it was brought to us by our Acting Personnel Director, Attorney Garcia, and the ISD Director, Pat Ruiz. Attorney?
Yes, good evening all. As just stated by Madam Vice President, we're here for authorization to fill the enforcement prosecutor position. With me is Pascal Ruiz, ISD Director. This position has not been filled for at least six months and therefore we're before you in order to have that authorization to post. Actually, it's already been posted to have it filled, actually.
Attorney Garcia, do you have the posting?
If I may just have one second. This was posted back in 2024. I do have a copy of the posting right here.
Can you give it to our secretary so she can make copies?
Yes, absolutely.
Counselors, just real quick while we do that. So typically, this item does not come before the Personnel Committee. It goes first to the ordinance. However, the Council President decided to bring this in front of us first before going to the ordinance committee. So we can review the ordinance and the actual job posting to ensure that the ordinance reflects what we're posting online. And this comes after the experience that we encountered during the Deputy DPW and other positions, that the ordinance says one thing, job posting says another. So we are here to make recommendation on the personnel aspect of it to then forward it to the ordinance committee, I believe. That is what, at least that's what I understand. All right, in the meantime, I'm gonna go ahead and read this email that we received earlier today for the record, that we received from the ISD Director Ruiz. We received this at 2:45 PM earlier today. Madam Chair Infanton, it was directed to me but CC'd to all committee members. Madam Chair Infanton, the delay in appointing the enforcement prosecutor has arisen from my recent discussions with the mayor, where we carefully examined the most effective strategies for the Inspection Services Department. Initially, my focus was on a comprehensive reorganization of our staff structure, which is essential for optimizing our operational capabilities. A significant part of this restructuring involves prioritizing key positions within the department, notably the Assistant Commissioner of Health and Code Services and the Enforcement Prosecutor roles. Filling these positions is crucial as they are integral to the functioning and success of our department. To improve our operational effectiveness, we have implemented several strategic measures and particularly in response to the Lawrence/Methuen Shared Services Grant, DPH, aimed to addressing various enforcement challenges. This grant represents an opportunity to enhance our resources and capabilities, allowing us to tackle enforcement issues more robustly. By leveraging these resources, we aim to create a more efficient enforcement framework that can adapt to the specific needs of our community. Moreover, a formal agreement has recently been established between the cities of Lawrence and Methuen, which will enable us to collaborate on enforcement matters more effectively. This partnership is expected to streamline our efforts and improve our collected impact on enforcement challenges, demonstrating our commitment to intercity cooperation. However, the timeline for appointing the enforcement prosecutor has regrettably extended by several weeks. I want to underscore that this position is of paramount importance to our department's success. Currently, we have only managed to collect approximately $32,000 in enforcement-related revenues, which is alarmingly low compared to the $160,000 worth of violations that remain uncollected. The enforcement prosecutor's role is vital in addressing these outstanding violations. Their expertise will be essential in implementing strategies to recover these funds and ensure compliance with our enforced policies. In summary, while the delay in filling the enforcement prosecutor position is unfortunate, it is part of a larger strategic approach to enhance the effectiveness of the Inspection Services Department. By prioritizing our staffing structure and fostering collaboration with neighboring cities, we aim to create a more robust enforcement mechanism that not only addresses current challenges but also positions us for the future success. Sincerely, Director Ruiz. Counselors, you all have now the job posting. While we look at this quickly, I'm gonna give the floor to the mic to Director Ruiz to say a few words about this position.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Counselors. So this position, I came in front of the council back in, I believe was when I started in April, so I think it was May. It hadn't been filled. I got the okay to fill the position. What we did is we posted it. We had like five candidates. Three candidates did not, well, one candidate did not return our message. Another one was fired by another company. There was one candidate that I sent forward to the mayor. And there was also a couple of other candidates that just didn't qualify for the position. They had no experience at all. So this position is a position that will be working with all the inspectors. The person would be in charge of, you know, be in charge of citizen serve. Every inspector, when they go out, they issue citations. They issue correction orders, that's what we call correction orders, according to the Housing Code and also the Food Code. Right now, we have over 250 restaurants that haven't complied. And I have all the inspectors writing, issuing tickets to these businesses because they're refusing to be, we have over 500 restaurants licenses according to the Food Code. And I say about half of them haven't, they were supposed to comply by December 30th. They haven't. We gave them, we sent notices to everybody. They still haven't complied. So as of last week, we started sending tickets to all these businesses that are not complying with getting their food permits. Eventually, if they don't, we're gonna have to go out and close these businesses because they're not supposed to be operating without permits. We also have a lot of people that come in for illegal apartments. They write tickets for that. Unregistered vehicles. So we write tickets for everything. You know, there's a lot of tickets on the books, as I stated in the email. That was 160 to the end of the month. But there's probably a lot more right now because you must issue at least 20 to 30 tickets a day. With the snow removed right now, we're issuing a lot of tickets. So we, you know, we need somebody to manage that. You know, the staff that we have now, we're so busy. You know, somebody has to learn to do that. It's a special procedure you gotta do. You issue the ticket, you have 21 days to pay it. If you don't pay it, then there's a lien put on the property. And then if they don't, after 30 days, then we gotta go to Housing Court. So we need somebody specifically to work on this. And that's why we need the enforcement prosecutor.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Counselor Luzon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, thank you, Madam Chair and Director Luzon.
Yes.
You mentioned that you receive five applications for this position?
Yeah, five applications.
On the 24th, 2024?
Yes.
One month in 2024?
Second?
One month.
Yeah, yeah, so the position was posted in May of, I think it was 2024, or June around that time. I don't have the exact date.
And you only receive, five applications?
Yes.
This applicant, so out of the five, you send how many to the mayor's office?
I sent one. Because we have to interview everybody. We interview everybody, then we give them a grading score, and then we send it to Personnel.
You didn't mention that at the beginning.
Well, I might have missed something.
Okay, so, okay, so all of them got an interview?
Second?
All of the candidates received?
Yes, they did, yes, they did. Well, one of them showed up 15 minutes late and I told him to leave. I wasn't gonna interview.
The other one was fired from a previous job?
From a previous job. And another one, there was one another one that was pretty good, but I recommended that person for a health code inspection. They didn't have the qualifications I felt to be a prosecutor, a code enforcement prosecutor. Because a force prosecutor, you have to be very detailed. You gotta write, you know, you have to deal with, you have to go to court. You have to deal with the judges. You have to deal with a lot of different people. So we need somebody that, you know, that's, you know, that has good writing skills. You know, they understand how to look up the law. The law right now that we use is called, you know, Mass General Law, 40U. And that law is, instead of going to court, we try to take care of it in-house. But then if they don't, and we go, I explain the process at the end. If they don't, that's when we take them to court, to Housing Court.
So this is my understanding based on what you just explained. So you already have a candidate that is applying to take this job?
I did make a job offer to the candidate back in June. Yes, I did. But then the candidate didn't get hired within the timeframe. That's why I'm here, because the six months elapsed.
Madam Chair, it may be incorrect, maybe if I'm wrong. So we are here basically to approve a position or to review something that already has a candidate? Interview, is that accurate, Madam Chair? I'm confused.
Well?
Yes, that's accurate. So what happens is every position that is ordinance, there is that six-month period for the mayor to offer an official employment. That, when that does not happen within that six-month timeframe, then this position, all positions that we approve, that we ordinance, have to come back in front of the council to be reauthorized or giving that, I would say, like reauthorize that six-month period. So that they could be hired.
Yeah, so we went through the whole process. But then in that timeframe, the person didn't get hired. And the six months elapsed. So now I'm in front of the council again so we could, you know, just get the approval again to, you know, we have the funding for it, everything's there. It's just that the six months elapsed. That's the only reason I'm here.
So, no, and I, my apologies if I'm asking. Wanted to make sure that I understand the process?
Yes.
So we have a name for this candidate already? We have a name of the candidate?
Well, yeah, so what it is, is that at that time, I recommended someone for the position.
Why we don't have the name in front of us?
Because I didn't think it was a personnel issue today. I thought it was just gonna be, right, I thought it was just gonna be going to...
So you know why I'm asking this, Director Ruiz? And it has nothing to do with you. I respect your job. But it looks like that we get informed. We are the last people to get the information. And the information usually comes from the outside. Well, not really. So basically, let me put it this way, because I don't want it misunderstood. I'm asking for this candidate's name. But it looks like that already the community knows the name of the candidate. And that's why I ask.
Yeah, so unfortunately, unfortunately...
Let me finish my point.
Yeah, yeah, I understand your point, but I wanted to explain myself too.
Yes, but let me finish my point. This is not about you.
No, I know, I know it's not.
Let me finish my point, Director. This is about the system.
Yeah.
And how the system is working. It shows, it doesn't look, it shows that something is wrong. So that's why I asked the Vice Chair to explain.
Yeah.
Not only for me and also for the people that are watching.
So, but unfortunately, Counselor...
I haven't finished.
Yeah. Unfortunately, Counselor.
May I finish?
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No, no, let me make my point.
Yeah, yeah.
So it looks like that the community already knows who this candidate is. And it doesn't have to do with you.
Yeah.
Don't take it personally.
Yeah, yeah.
And we are the last one to get to know the name of the candidate. Well, we already, some of us already know. So my question is, and my concern, not my question, my concern is why the things keep happening like that? Why is the community have more information than us as a council?
Yeah.
That is my concern. Why? Because it looks like it shows zero transparency. And now you can explain.
Okay, so what I'd like to say is that we did everything by the book back then, and I'm doing everything by the book now. This position doesn't go in front of the City Council for approval. We're just approving the position because it lapsed. So, you know, I could give you the name, but I'm not gonna do it in public. You know, because, you know, you just don't do that. A lot of people know because, you know, we have a lot of people that, everybody knows in the city of Lawrence, you know, people spread rumors. And then people also, you know, in my department, I know that they go out and say a lot of things to other people on the radio and everywhere else. And believe me, I'm sick and tired of that also, you know? So, you know, there's all kinds of information that goes on Facebook. You know, it goes everywhere. And whoever did that shouldn't have done that, you know? Because that's a personnel issue, just between personnel and myself, because it's not a position that goes in front of the City Council. You know, I thought today we were just here just to move the other position over. I'm being transparent, I'm telling you everything. I have all the applications here, I have all my notes here, I have everything here. If you wanna see it, I could give it to you, you know? I'm not hiding anything, just to let you know.
Oh, no, and I...
You know me for a long time.
I know you and I respect your job, that's why. I mentioned at the beginning, don't take it personally.
No, I'm not taking it personally.
It's not about, it's not about you, it's about how the system works.
Yeah.
And it's, I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, and I know that. And I've worked for the city for 37 years. And I don't think everybody's ever heard of anybody, anything that I did in the fire department or here that I did underhandedly. All the counselors here call me, I tell them whatever you wanna know. I respect all the counselors here, I respect everybody. But I'm also, also, if I have to say something, and you know me, I say it. That's just the way I am. I don't try to hide anything.
And I, once again, it's not about you.
No, and I know that.
It's about how things, the system works. And it's concerning.
Yeah, but there's nothing underhand to go in here, though. There's nothing, nothing under, this position was...
Okay, I'm gonna stop this discussion right here.
Okay.
All right, so we can all get on the same page. The role that we currently have... So we can, so I understand Counselor Luzon's concern and I understand where you're coming from, Director Ruiz. For my counselors, this isn't the first, nor going to be the last, that we're gonna have to reauthorize an ordinance for a position. This happens all the time. For whatever reason it happens, city government, any, any, any daily operational agency or business. Sometimes things happen. To Director Ruiz's point, this position and the rest of the positions that we have under new business does not need to be confirmed. The person does not need to be confirmed by the City Council. What we are confirming or approving is the actual ordinance or the language of the ordinance. Where we are here to do is to ensure that the job posting reflects the ordinance and the ordinance reflects the job posting. Other than that, once this goes up to the full council or even tonight, there are nine of us. If majority of the council feels like we need this, we still need this position, then the reauthorization or, and again, all the items tonight are all reauthorization items. If the majority of the council feels that any of those items are needed, then it'll be approved to be reauthorized. If any of these positions, if the majority of the council feels like it is not needed, then the council has the right to deny the reauthorization of the ordinance. That is the process that we're here to do, to make. And I just want to get to the work.
Well, could I say something, please? So I just wanna say that the position, we do need the position. Like I said, we, right now, 160,000, we haven't collected. We could probably, right now, we could probably collect 200,000, all the tickets we've been giving out in the last two months. If the council wishes not to go through with this, then I'm just letting you know, the tickets are not gonna get paid. That's it, you know? There's nothing I can do about that. I don't have, I don't have the staff to be, you know, prosecuting enforcement person.
Can you give us some examples of why, within the six months, this position did not get filled?
So the person that we, that I recommended, there was whatever personnel issues, there were things going back and forth. I'm not privy to that, but that's, you know, that's whatever, you know, was going on. So that's, you know, that's what I know. After that, I really don't know, you know? So once they said it was okay, once the person got okayed, now the six months was over. So now I had to come in front of the board, I mean, in front, I'm sorry, in front of the council to, you know, to reauthorize the position.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, good evening, Committee Personnel Committee Chairperson and City Counselors. Most importantly, the reason why there was a delay was that we were going back and forth with the city of Methuen in regards to the grant. Because part of that grant also has to do with educating the restaurants owners and also regarding certain violations. Remember, the department is not about fining people, it's about compliance. However, once people don't comply or the businesses don't comply, then we have to enforce it by stringent measures. And that includes fines. So since there were this debate with the city of Methuen, that caused also additional delay. And the mayor didn't want to, and besides that, the director was dealing with other issues in regards to the position that you had that came before you not recently and also the reorganization of the department in terms of assignments to different code enforcement inspectors.
Thank you, Counselor Luzon.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Chair. So we're gonna, this person already was offered, it was offered the job. So we have to now review an ordinance, not the job posting? Are we making changes to this job posting or we're gonna make sure that it matches the ordinance? Because if we are making changes to this job posting, or let's say that the ordinance committee decides to make any changes, so the person is gonna receive a, maybe, a new job description based on a new ordinance? Or we just gonna, I'm confused. Because this is how I see it. We already offered this person a job based on what we have here. So we're gonna go back to point A. Review or revise whatever the ordinance and, I mean, the job description. So this person already was offered a job based on what the director mentioned. It looks like that it doesn't make sense from my point.
That would be up to the candidate's decision whether or not to accept the new job description, let's say. So what can happen is if you decide to modify or to change, add the actual ordinance, then we would have to obviously update the job description, at which point we would have to let the candidate know that these duties or job description responsibilities, however you wanna call it, are being changed. And they would have to make the determination whether or not they wanna keep or they wanna, they wanna take the job as is.
And thank you for explaining. And now that I have you here, I don't know why these job positions, we're not receiving resumes from people that are already here, that perhaps are looking to make more money or to have a different job. So it looks like that all the jobs, the openings are... So it looks like that all the jobs, the openings are filled, most of them are filled from people from the outside.
So the reason why, the reason why we don't, we don't have resumes in front of us is, again, this is not a position, none of the positions that are before us tonight need a city council confirmation. The individuals do not need a city council confirmation. They're also not a city council hire, just like, like, for example, like the city attorney or, or the city clerk. Where in that case, the city council is responsible for interviewing, reviewing applications, resumes, and interviewing and making the selection. Tonight, neither of those are the options, which is why we don't have resumes or.
I understand, Madam Chair, I understand, and thank you for the clarification. I made a comment, which is a concern, not only my concern, also it's a concern for members of this community. And I know that we're not going to be able to see the people, the resumes of the people that are applying, because it's not the job that we have in front of us. But that is a, a concern, a valid concern, that people from inside this institution are not given the opportunity to apply for jobs that are available. It looks like that it's always someone from the outside, not outside, outside, like, from one that is not in that department that is getting the job. But thank you so much for explaining that, Madam Chair. I appreciate it.
Attorney Garcia. Thank you. Just to, to answer your, your concern.
No, you don't have to answer my concern. Take it as an opinion.
Counsel Luzon, I give.
Take it as an opinion. I don't, I don't need an answer.
Counsel Luzon, I give her the floor, Counsel Luzon.
Thank you.
You have the floor, Attorney Garcia. Please, please proceed. I would like to hear what she, what she has to say.
I didn't answer that question.
I think you'll probably like my answer.
I don't want to hear your answer.
I want to hear you. As the chair of this committee, I would love to hear your answer.
Thank you. So it's come to my attention that this is, this is a concern of the community. So what I have learned is that in the past, when there are job postings, they would be, there would be a mass email to, to the whole city. And that's what I intend on doing with any new job postings that come further. This has just come to my attention literally as of maybe Friday afternoon. So any further job postings, I can tell the council that I've already spoken to my, to my staff. We will be sending out a citywide email announcing that we have this, this new position so that we can have internal candidates, so to that point.
Could I respond?
Thank you. Director Ruiz.
So I, I just want to say that these two positions that we're talking about, they're not, they're not union.
We're not talking about two. We're talking about one.
Okay, so I'm talking about the one now.
Let's, let's stick to the agenda, please.
So, so that, that position is non-union. Nobody in the department wanted the position because it's non-union. They want to be in the union. I, I asked, I asked people there that I thought they were qualified to do it, and there are a few people that are qualified to do it, but they didn't want to do it because it's a non-union job. They, they, they said, you know, they, they want the union protection even though it's, it's a lot more money. So there's nothing I can do, you know, to force people to take a job or tell them, you know, to tell them, you know, it's a great job. I explained it to them, and I know they're qualified to do it, but they don't want to do it because it's non-union.
Thank you. All right. I have one suggestion to be sent to the ordinance committee. I would like the ordinance to reflect the five years of experience in public health, fire prevention, building and zoning, planning and land use regulation, research, legal procedure and process, or legal enforcement, and appeal, or any equivalent combination of training and slash or experience. In addition to what we already have in the ordinance, which states experience in enforcement of sanitary code and health laws, rules and regulation, additional experience may be considered in lieu of said degree. So that's one recommendation as a personnel committee member that I'm going to make to the ordinance committee to add that from the posting onto the, the, the ordinance. So we have any other recommendations from, from this committee for the ordinance committee?
So this is part of the qualification.
Counsel Levy?
This is a, a part of the qualification.
Yep, to be, to be added within the ordinance. Any other? Counsel Levy.
This is for Mr. Parksway.
Director.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good evening.
I have a question. How the department was dealing with the collection during this, like, six month, that's more than six month? Because since June to now is more than six month, how the department was doing with the collection?
Yeah, so I, I, I forward an annual report to the councilors, and I, I put it on there. So what, what it is, is the last year from January, I, but I started in April, from January, we have, the system is called Citizen Serve. And, you know, we could get all kinds of reports from there. So the report that I ran showed that, you know, that a hundred and sixty dollars worth of tickets, I mean, a hundred and sixty thousand worth of tickets weren't paid. Thirty-two thousand dollars were, were paid, and the thirty-two dollars because people complied on their own. They paid on their own. The people that don't want to pay, that's the people that we have to send them notices by law. We have to, there's all kinds of, you know, information that we have to send them. You know, then we have to take them, you know, if they don't pay, we got to take them to the lien department, to the, to the treasurers, put a lien on the property. We put, we put, we also put alerts on Citizen Serve that people that don't pay, and then that's how sometimes we get them. They come in to pull a permit, and there's an alert saying that they owe a ticket, so they end up paying, you know, paying the ticket so they get their permit. So those are the things that we're doing to try to collect, but we need somebody specific to do that, to do that job.
But how your department has been doing this right now? Who's handled this?
Nobody's doing it right now. Nobody's doing it. So the, the tickets that are getting paid.
All of these are being behind since the last year.
Yeah, we just don't have the, the, the people to, to do this job because, you know, we get code complaints. Sagan?
The city is not collecting.
The city hasn't collected a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Just only a hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
Until the end of the year. I haven't done the last couple of months yet.
A hundred and sixty thousand. And how much did you have on your head? How much did the city collect it?
Thirty, about approximately thirty-two thousand from the report that I ran.
Thirty-two thousand?
Yes.
And the city has been owing at the end of the year our one hundred and sixty thousand?
Yes. So those people that didn't pay for the last year, those, those, those businesses of people, we have to, we have to, because they didn't pay. Now we have to put liens on their properties. We have to go, go after them in housing court. So there, you know, there's a specific, there's a specific procedure you got to do with these tickets because we're, we're doing it under, under forty U, Massachusetts General Forty U. And, and there's specific things that you have to do to, you know, to, to, to get this, you know, revenue into the city.
And you mentioned that one of the reasons was because all the department was doing some kind of reorganization? That's.
Yeah, so what, what happens is, Department of Public Health, they have this new thing. It's, it's, it's called SAPHE, S-A-P-H-E, two-point-oh. So this, this, this new procedure, the inspector, I mean, well, not the inspector, but in, in the whole state of Massachusetts, all the, all the food inspectors and all the housing inspectors need to be certified, and there's tier one, tier two, and tier three. And within two, next two years, they need to be certified, like a building inspector. If they're not certified, they won't be able to do any inspections per the Department of Public Health. So I've been working on that. Methuen, we, we, we're part of the, we're part of the shared services grant from Methuen. That just went through. Actually, we have a meeting tomorrow with them. We might be getting an inspector through them, food inspector, because we're so behind. And I, I checked with other cities. Other cities have five or six food inspectors that, that have five hundred or six hundred perm, food permits. We only have three people to do it.
Yes, but what I can see in here is like at the lab, for so long, we've been waiting to fill the position. It's since June of the last year that we posted.
Yes, yes.
And you did the interview practically by the same time.
Yes.
Okay, we are March, it's about ten months, almost a year, waiting to fill the position.
Well, yeah, it's, it's been, it's been about six months.
Why we didn't fill the position before?
Because the person that, the person that I, the person that I recommended, that I sent the name up to the mayor, which he's the appointing authority. He wanted to appoint the authority, but then other issues came up.
What? So if the person was not able to take the position by the time that it was offered, why we don't repost again and try to get somebody else?
Yeah, well, that, that's my mistake. I take, I take full blame for that. I should have posted it.
That we shouldn't be waiting so to be so behind, almost a year on collecting the money.
Yeah, I know, yeah, so that's my fault.
The city is losing money.
Yeah, I take full responsibility for that. I should have posted it.
That's something that we have to take into consideration.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah, I know.
So now we don't know if the person anyway is going to take it or not after, like you said, if we review, like, right now, we are reviewing the ordinance. We are putting different things. It has to be, I think so that with the changes has to be reposted because this is the new things that we've been adding to the ordinance.
Yeah, so, I mean, if, if the position needs to be.
It's going to take more time to decide who's going to be or not.
Yeah.
Or if the person is going to be, if the person is going to decide to take the position.
Yeah, so if, if it's the council's pleasure and you want, you know, we have to repost it and everybody has to, you know, do the whole thing again, then that's what we got to do, you know?
Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Santiago has a question.
Yes.
According with the Counselor Levy said to repost, I see the post for the position just take like ten days, not a month, post.
Usually posted for two weeks. A position gets posted for two weeks, you know, it's up to, I'm not sure.
Which is standard procedures for every posting, job posting within the city that, that came from negotiations from the unions. What I'm going to do, there, there's something that, there's a matter that came to my attention regarding clearance. It's something that was mentioned earlier. I don't know what can be said publicly, what cannot be said, so I'm going to table this item. And I'm going to request for the HR director to submit a letter from the city attorney's office echoing what we heard today is, is accurate, and that we can move forward with, with, with or not the reauthorization of this ordinance. So can I get a motion to table item forty-nine dash twenty-five?
Thank you, councilors.
Motion has been seconded. Are there, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Thank you. Next item, item fifty dash twenty-five, authorization to fill Assistant Superintendent of Ceremonies Ordinance Number one twelve point twenty point zero thirty in the cemetery, which is also, has been vacant for more than six months. We have our personnel director and the superintendent of the cemetery, Superintendent Lopez. Director, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Similarly to, to the issue that we just heard, this, this position has also been vacant for over six months, and that's why we're here. However, the distinction is that this hasn't been posted in quite, quite a while. There has not been any, any candidates, any interviews or anything of that sort. It is in front of you today in order to have it authorized so that we can post it and that position be filled. Ms. Carmen Lopez is here as well to speak on, on the position.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Carmen, Bellevue Cemetery. I have not filled the position. The position is budgeted for. We waited strategically to have this posted now. And the time lapsed, and I just need your permission to do that, and I would appreciate the consideration.
Thank you, councilors. Are there any concerns regarding the procedure of this and the personnel aspects of the ordinance and slash or position?
I have a question. In the ordinance itself, it does not, it does not identify or clarify the experience or educational component of it. Do we have that? Do we have that information?
It does not have it.
Hold on, I'm trying to pull up. I'm sorry, the qualifications section is not included. Do we have qualifications for this, for this position?
I have not found any, no. This was directly, what I, what you have in front of you is directly from the charter.
From the charter?
Or, excuse me, the ordinance. It should have been given to you. At least I have it part of my, my memo.
No, because it hasn't been posted yet.
See, I believe it's never been updated since like eighteen forty-seven.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to ask for this one to be tabled as well so we can get it updated and send that recommendation to the ordinance committee with the qualifications. Can I have a motion to table? There's currently.
We did a job description.
Oh, there is a, there is a job description?
One second. Let me just have one second. I just had, here it goes.
Yeah, I just have the ordinance here.
But we have one that Chanel Graca did, and we put this out, so we activated in twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-three.
So we're going to table this for the next meeting. What's today, Monday? I wonder if we can get one to.
Can they send it to us, the others reason that they have?
I'll send it to you guys, because you can see what we put together of what's needed.
Okay, let's do that. Can you send us a drafted job description?
Yeah, so you guys can see.
So we can see it. So then with that being said, let's send this up as a committee report. With, as a committee report, depending on us receiving that job description so we can compare it. Committee report, yeah. So can I have a motion to send item fifty dash twenty-four as a committee report? Motion has been made by Counsel Santiago. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Luzon. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There's only two ayes, so we don't, I don't have.
Aye.
Okay, three ayes. The ayes have it. You guys got to say it. Thank you, ladies. All right, next item is item fifty-three dash twenty-five, authorization to fill intake specialist position ordinance two point seventy point one eight zero in the Planning and Development Department. That's also been vacant for more than six months. We have obviously the, the HR director, and Sue, are you here for this?
Yes, she is.
And we have Ms. Fink here from the Planning and Development Office.
Good evening again. Very similar to the last two issues that we had in front of you. This is in order to get authorization to fill because this, these positions have been, or this position has been vacant for over six months. Recently, and I know that Ms. Fink can speak to this, they're, they just received a grant that has funding for these staff positions that are in front of you. I'll let her speak.
Good evening, councilors. As the acting HR director indicated, we recently were awarded a four-year lead hazard reduction grant, which is the funding source for this position. This has been vacant since June of twenty twenty-four. We were winding down the grant. We're closing out. So there was no need for an intake position to be filled until we got a, a new grant. We're hoping to get the authorization to expend on the next council agenda for this grant, so this can be effective April first. um, so this can be effective April first. This person would be involved in receiving the applications for people to have the lead paint removed from their home, they would do the income qualifications and process invoices, um, get purchase orders and things of that nature.
Councilors, any questions or comments? Councilor Luzon.
I, I just wanna say, um, Linda, they like, they didn't want that attorney to answer because she was not here when they posted the last, uh, job, uh, position. To ask them, to make sure that that gets posted in time, and I know by law you have to post for, for ten days. Based on the concern that I mentioned-
Fourteen days.
Please post this. That people inside the department are aware and I'm also think will do that. That please make sure that this, this position is, is posted and that employees are aware that it's happening and also that the community knows that this job is available. Just to avoid any future complications.
No, absolutely.
And thank you for your answer. And it was not for you because we weren't here when the previous job was posted.
I'm gonna pass the gavel, so I have a legal question for, for City Attorney. Where are we at?
Um, no questions.
No questions. Alright, sorry, I just had to make sure on an item on today's agenda that I, I got some council advice on. I'm sorry if you've, if you have said this and I did not catch it, so I apologize if this is redundant. Has this, has this, uh, position been posted? Anyone interviewed for it?
I'm not sure whether or not someone was interviewed.
It hasn't been posted yet.
Hasn't been posted, okay. Alright, so same thing, do you guys have a job description? Even though this ordinance is pretty detailed, so I-
Yeah.
I think, I mean- I don't think-
I have the ordinance and the, I do have a job posting here, it's quite old, it's from twenty twenty.
No, that's okay. I think, I think we're good with this, let's send this up to the full council um, for ordinance committee re- uh, review, can I get a motion? To send to the full council-
As a committee report.
As a committee report.
So.
Motion has been made by Councilor Levy, seconded by Councilor Santiago, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Thank you. Alright, last item, item forty, fifty-four dash twenty-five, authorization to fill data specialist slash outreach coordinator coordinator position, ordinance number two point seven zero point one six zero in the Planning and Development Office, which, Department, which has also been vacant for more than six months. Any ladies have the floor again?
Thank you again, uh, this is very similar to all three that we've had tonight. Uh, this position has been vacant for over six months and that's why we're in front of you, you here today in order to authorize the, um, the posting and the filling of the position. As previously stated, this is one of the positions that has received a, um, a grant, um, so we would use that grant money in order to fill this position.
Councilor Valenti, I see that it's practically the same as the other and it's very complete, you know, that's, uh-
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, we have the location, we have the salary, I think that salary maybe has to be reviewed, but it's a very complete, um, description on the, in the ordinance.
Councilor Levy, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to send it to the full council as a committee report.
Motion has been made, seconded by Councilor Luzon, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Thank you. Um, Attorney Garcia, stay right there for a second. Can I have a motion to untable item thirty-eight dash twenty-five? Um, confirm appointment of Pamela Gonau Assistant Com- Commissioner of Health and, Health and Cold Services.
So.
Motion has been made, is there a second? Second, the Chair.
Second.
Oh, seconded by Councilor Luzon, uh, no discussion? I'm sorry? Item thirty-eight dash twenty-five.
Thirty.
Dash twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Mm-hmm. I'm switching between Director and Attorney, but-
It's okay.
Director, the reason why I untabled this, uh, last time we left off that the individual submits to, uh, submits a, a, um, an ask, a legal ask to, to the Ethics Commission, do we have an update? Was that requirement fulfilled or where are we at with that?
Sorry to interrupt you. Uh, the information that I received was that she had requested, um, the legal opinion just around January twenty-fifth, if I'm not mistaken, it's gonna take them thirty days to provide a written opinion, which is why she came forward, uh, to the committee with a verbal, she wrote it down, it was a verbal, but it was written down. Um, however, to my, to my knowledge, she has not sent me, uh, anything in writing that she may have received, but the thirty days would be tomorrow. So, um, I have yet to receive anything pertaining to that.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's the only thing pending.
Can we send it to the-
Council Luz- um, Councilor Levy.
Can we send this to the full council and just wait on, on there to discuss it?
I'm going to advise against it because this, this has to do with a conflict of interest, which is, is the law, it's a state law and I wanna make sure, um, that we give a good rec- that we have the most appropriate recommendation for the full council.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, is there a second? Probably seconded, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
I'm gonna say no.
Uh, roll call, um- Yes, but we're doing a roll call right now. Councilor Luzon?
Yes.
Councilor Santiago?
Yes.
Councilor Levy?
No.
And then, and the Chair votes yes. So thank you, we'll be in touch.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a great night.
You as well. And you know, it's okay, I understand. Uh, any other tabled matters? Seeing none, at this point, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made, seconded by Council Santiago, Santiago, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it, thank you.
... mentioned. Oh, this whole time I have to repeat myself? Okay, hopefully everybody else did. Um, okay. Our voting members present today, to my left is our City Councilor for District, uh, F, Mark LaPlante, um, our Vice Chair and, uh, Counselor for District A, Fidelina Santiago, and to my right, our City Council President and Counselor-at-Large, Giovanni Rodriguez. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance before we commence the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so there's no minutes for City Council approval, the first item on the agenda, um, under New Business is item forty-five twenty-five, the merger of a portion of Bay State Road with city-owned land under Mass General laws, Chapter Forty, Section Fifteen, for the future development of a recreational park. We have our acting, um, Planning Director, uh, Dan McCarthy here today to provide us with an- What was that?
No longer acting.
No longer, okay, sorry, they need to, they need to start removing this. Our Planning Director, uh, Dan McCarthy, uh, is here with us today to provide us with an update, no vote, uh, will be required from my understanding?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
You have the floor.
Sure, the, uh, we've been working earnestly on, um, construction of this park at Bay State Road and I just wanna give you a site plan that was done by our land surveyor, showing what the processes, and, you know, you've all recently, um, voted on, uh, a document that, um, abandoned the use of the, of the Bay State Road as a public way, that's step one. The step two is, uh, the approval of, uh, a merger plan and it's gonna be merging a portion of a lot and that, that belongs to the city into the property, that's part of the, uh, abandoned public way. Under-
Is there any blueprints, documents that you are able to, okay?
Yes, there should be a site plan in front of you, I, I don't know if you all have it.
Was this provided in everybody's pocket?
I think they distributed it earlier.
Oh, I don't have one.
The first committee maybe pick up everything.
I don't have one. No, because that was in the previous committees, um-
So a portion of the land, uh, that we kind of, that is, is Bay State Road was abandoned by you and that, that requires a public hearing and a vote. Then we're gonna be subdividing and, and, and putting these two properties together and that requires you to make a vote that you wanna affirmatively use for, as city land, the portion of the abandoned way because there's case law that says if you abandon a street under public, under, under common law, that it can go to the abutting properties. There's two abutters to this property, we've met with both of them, they're both in agreement that they're gonna sign over any rights to this. Um, one of them is gonna be getting an easement and I do wanna provide you the easement package with that before we vote on it. The, um, other one is, is giving up the rights, it's Alberto Nunez, who owns, uh, a, a commercial property next door, he's a big supporter of the Boys Club and he's gonna waive any rights to, to succeed on this. So, uh, we will be taking a portion of the land that, that currently is part of the same land that belongs to the water treatment plant. Um, I, I gave my last copy out, so, but the numbers are on there, that we're gonna be subdividing a portion of that property and there's a, and there's a portion of the, of the property that's unimproved, uh, that, that is unimproved land, um, it's not part of the public way, um, but it's like, it's, it's leftover from the subdivision when, uh, this was all done and that's gonna be incorporated, that's about sixteen hundred square feet. So the whole parcel will add up to, um, three ways, but this also requires City Council approval to create this parcel of land and like I said, it'll consist of three different small parcels that are gonna be merged together, uh, under common law, uh, and will, and the, this plan will be recorded. The second, the third vote that I'm gonna be asking will be coming, I believe will be coming to Ordinance Committee and we're currently, it is, uh, on the agenda at Ordinance Committee and it is, uh, currently at the Planning Board and I'm gonna be asking the Planning Board to approve it for re-changing the zoning. Right now, the zoning on this land is industrial, it's, it's I-two secondary industrial. Clearly, that's not an appropriate zoning for this. This is gonna be a, a park, a municipal park and we want it, uh, rezoned to, uh, open space recreation. Um, the reason I'm doing this in this manner is because we have to advertise these with public hearings and I'd rather do one public hearing and pay for one advertisement than do three separate public hearings and pay for it, so I'm just trying to be, I guess, cheap or frugal. But that's, that's the reason we're doing all the, but it makes sense that- But it makes sense that it's all done together, and these items are all included as part of a package, even though they're totally separate in subject matter. So that's why I said, I don't need a vote on this tonight. I'd rather come back and, after the planning board assumedly approves the open space recreation, I'll be going to ordinance that week as well. And we'd be bringing these all up, and I'd be putting up for a public meeting, probably first week of April. But I just want everybody to kind of be aware where this project's going, that the land, this landmass that you see is going to be the park, and that we're working with all the different abutters on the property down there to make sure everybody's satisfied with this. So, I open up to any questions?
Okay. Discussions? Anyone? Oh, okay. You mentioned one of the abutters was Mr. Nunez?
Yes, he owns, the two property owners, one is Alberto Nunez, and then there's another company that has a mill building, a warehouse building, that they have a back door which enters it. So we are working with him to create an easement and so that he can still access his door and have a place for his dumpster that will not be, impact the park. So it'll be fenced, and it'll be separate from the park. And...
And who would be the second abutter? Because I just want to make sense of the map.
I, I know the gentleman owns, I can't think of these, an LLC that owns it. They have a company called Apple Wiper Company, and...
Because the way I'm looking at the map, for some reason, my eyes are drawn to lots one, two, and three. Do you mind making sense of what, you know?
Yeah, so Nunez LLC is one of the abutting owners, and you'll see a square down on the right-hand side.
I see it.
Yeah, that's, that's the other abutter.
Okay.
Like I said, we've been working with them throughout this process.
Are there any current plans that you guys have moved forward with in terms of what would be the plan of action or some sort of blueprint in regards to the park? Or the space that will take place?
Yes, yeah, we do have that. We'll be doing, we'll be doing public meetings and talking about the park as we develop it. I think, I know Brad Bush is here from Groundwork Lawrence. He's one of the principals working on this project with us. So we, and I think, at one of the committees, we did, I think at the other, at the other ordinance committee, we did review a slide, and I can be, I'd be glad to provide that, that presentation to this committee
That would be nice.
In two weeks.
Okay. And as spring approaches us, I'm assuming that this is a project that's going to take, take place sometime in the spring, is it?
Yes, yes, we're hoping, I think we're hoping to have this, this area constructed and done by the end of the summer.
I would like to take a site visit, so whenever you guys could set that up, and then invite all the councillors that would love to join and be able to partake in this.
As soon as we get a little melt in the...
I know, I know. Okay, so if no further questions, no further questions? Okay, the floor is yours.
Compared to the Popcorn and Praxis...
Yeah, Mrs. Sideris' land, yeah.
Compared to that location, what were you talking about?
Well, this is much farther on the other side.
It's on the other side?
So he's on the other side of Bay State Road. Bay State Road comes around a large curve. It seems to end at McFarland Lane, which goes down, and you have those, all those auto repair shops in there. They're all owned by Mr. Farah. On the other side of the street, there is a company that provides auto parts. It's called Apple Wiper Company, and they do, and they do, they do small parts for cars, like windshield wipers and stuff like that. It's just a warehouse, and it's been, it's been, it's been there for more than thirty years. So, but that applicant, we've talked to him. He said as long as he's able to get to his back garage door and have a place for his dumpster, he's, he's very supportive of the program. As you probably realize, for, for several years now, he's probably had homeless people living back there. He's had break-ins, cleaning this up, illuminating this, making this a nicer area with people going, he's all in favor of that.
Motion to table.
And the ayes have it. The second order of business under new business is item five-two-zero-two-four, approve amendments to the city zoning ordinance to allow accessory dwelling units as permitted use. Mr. McCarthy, you have the floor.
I'd like to ask that that be stayed tabled. We're meeting with the building commissioner's office and the inspectional service and the other city agencies to go over this. As you know, the state's already approved their final version, which came in on February second, was authorized. There was supposed to be some debate about it, but I went to several of the meetings. There was very little debate. And so that, that is currently in, our ordinance memorializes much of that. There's a couple provisions that are different, and I think we want to kind of regroup and come back before this committee and present them to you, those changes. And it may not be necessary that we even adopt the ordinance, but if we're going to do anything that's different than the state, it's good to have it there and say that the city's been on top of this. I think one of the differences is that the city-provided document allows for more than one accessory dwelling unit, but it's by special permit, and you have to have parking. Couple of the reasons I'm concerned about the state requirement is there's no requirement for parking. So I think it's something we need to, in-house, be very cognizant of that, you know, we can't let this, this get out of hand because there's a very, a very significant issue with parking in the city.
Any questions from any other members?
Motion to table.
Second, okay, all those in favor say aye. And the ayes have it. I just do have a suggestion, Mr. McCarthy. In this committee, specifically, well, no, specifically with the housing committee, I noticed that you present a lot of documents. Sometimes we have the documents at hand. Sometimes you're presenting the documents the day of the meeting.
Yes, yeah.
Regardless if we have the documents at hand prior to the meeting or you're just handing it, handing it the day of, I would like for those who are, you know, if they are viewing it, that they're having an understanding as to what we're viewing as well. So just going forward, might as well just be prepared to be able to present these documents, and that way we're able to stream it and the folks are able to see.
And I intend on doing that. I just, I have a new staff member, Reni Fanini. He's working, he's going to be a city planner. So I'll, we're increasing our staff. I was actually kind of unexpectedly, because it's a Monday meeting. I wasn't expecting that. We were planning on coming on Tuesday or Wednesday.
It's okay, I know. Just a heads up, you know, it's something I want to make sure that I'm, I'm kind of like establishing this rule going forward. I tend to be very flexible, and sometimes we just let certain things lie, but I just think just to be fair and consistent that we're, you know, whenever you're providing with certain documentation, and this goes for anyone that would come before me, that they're prepared to also have this presented for everyone to see. Moving forward, we're untabling item ninety-one twenty-four. Just wanted to get your confirmation. No, we're not untabling this. I believe you said this was already approved, so it just has to be removed from the agenda.
Has already been acted upon. So I think I sent the documents around, and I, so it'll just be removed from the...
That's perfectly fine, I'll make note of that.
I spoke to the city clerk.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that, because it's coming off the agenda.
I'll send an email today regarding that. Moving forward, we are untabling item two-six-three-twenty-three, declaration of surplus property, two-zero-two-dash-two-zero-two-A, Park Street, map one-seven-one, lot one-thirty-three. The floors are yours.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry. Can I get a motion to untable this item? All those in favor say aye. Aye, and the ayes have it. The floor is yours, Mr. McCarthy.
Sure, thank you. The city's asset manager was, had an ill child this evening, so she was the one who was going to present this. I believe she sent you some documents in support of this. The lot is a four thousand square foot lot. I'm kind of doing this all from memory, so bear with me. I, I think those are accurate. I think the, it's valued at a little over twenty thousand dollars, and, which would make it capable of a direct disposition. And all that we're asking at this point is just have a declared surplus. And I, my assumption is it will be coming back. Any land sale will be coming back to this commission, committee.
And if you'd like to make a motion, we send this to the full council with a favorable recommendation to declare a surplus.
Okay. There's a proper second. Council president, the floor is yours.
Mr. McCarthy? Mr. McCarthy, you mentioned that this is going to be used for a building or a buildable lot?
No, it's not a buildable lot. I'm not sure what the direct dispositions are. I think that the direct disposition doesn't have anything to do with the buildability of a lot. To build in that neighborhood, you need five thousand square feet of land. When we've done direct dispositions in the past, if it was being sold below market value, but there's usually conditions put upon it, whether you're selling it to a neighbor or somebody else. So I'm not sure if it's going to be used for open space and parking or what the proposed use is. But the, again, like I said, the Bromfield's property, which abuts this, is going to the, to two, to two neighbors who live on Bromfield Street to be used as parking for their homes. I'm not sure what the proposed use for this is.
Okay, because usually, we usually have the yard sale.
Was anything submitted or not? Again, I haven't been working on this. Has anybody been, anything been submitted for you? Proposed use?
Not on that end.
Okay. Yeah, so, under state procurement law, if a piece of land is valued at more than thirty-five thousand dollars, it has to be RFP'd, no matter what the use is.
No, no, my question is around the intent of the use. If it is a buildable lot, obviously the assessment value, since it's a buildable lot, it increased tremendously.
Sure.
Even though we didn't assess it that way, the assessment value right now is twenty thousand dollars.
Four thousand square foot lot would certainly seem like a buildable lot. It's not buildable by right, but if someone approaches zoning board and said, I have a four thousand square foot lot in this neighborhood...
That's, that's why I'm asking. Because if the intention is to have a direct disposition to somebody that have the intent of build, and then the value of the property shouldn't be a direct disposition. It should be, it should be valued based on the intent of the uses. That's why we use, that's why I'm concerned sometimes when it comes to the direct disposition, instead of doing the yard sale, because on the yard sale, we have conditions, which one of the condition is to use it for a specific purpose. And since you brought that up, that it's going to be a direct disposition, I'm assuming that there is some intent already, or some movement around that already, to be able to do something around it. And if it is, if that's the case, and then we want to, we want to know what is the intent to do something related to the, to the lot. If it's going to be parted out between two tenants or two landlords around the area, okay, that's fine. We just want to know, like, what is that they're going to do? And if it is, the intent is to build, and then the city should be, should be, shouldn't be doing a direct disposition for that amount of money, they should be doing a direct disposition for the value of the lot. And then that trigger the point of having a, having an RFP.
It's, it's been a long time since I was doing, handling this part of it, but I did it for years. Typically, the way we did it was, we would, we would, we would have a declared surplus, then it would be brought back as development, the way it was going to be developed. We'd come back to you with suggested conditions based upon the prior use. For instance, our yard sale program, we will limit the use to, you know, to parking, open space, or some other accessory use for an existing home. It would, it would go to an abutter. If it was RFP'd, we'd put the conditions into the RFP. On land disposition, it kind of falls in between differentially, and we'd be, who's going to purchase the land? We'd tell them, what's it going to be used for? Then we'd come back to you and say, it's going to be used for X, Y, or Z, and then you would approve it to that. If it doesn't, you know, meet your requirements, then it wouldn't be sold.
Can you put a package together and send it over to the full council so we can analyze the intent of the conversation that we have?
I'll have the asset manager do that. Again, like I said, it hasn't been my job for a while, but...
Yeah, but I mean, you're asking us to take a vote on it.
I will, I will. Yes.
Any further questions? Okay, Councilor LaPlante.
Just so I'm clear about what the request is. So this is a proposal to declare a surplus. All that means, from what I understand, is that there is no other city agency that has a need or requirement that they want to use as parcel for anything. And once they satisfy that there's no other city agency that has a need or wants this property for any reason, then it can be declared surplus. Now, my understanding, there was this group that's been under some, it's been, the name has changed, but formerly known as the Real Property Task Force. I don't know what it's called now. It could be called the same thing, I have no idea. But that is the group that gets together to work on, to try to figure out what exactly it is that's in the best interest of the neighborhood or the city or whatever. They come up with something, they send it over to us, and then we say, that's a great idea. Or we say, are you kidding me? That's the worst thing ever. What are you guys thinking? Or they say, that's an okay idea, but here are some conditions. If you put these things in, now, now I think we can support it. So what are we doing differently now than what's been happening in the past? What is it that we're, we're asking you to do for the next city council meeting?
I'm much, I believe they want to know if there's, if there's already an intention, if there's already been somebody that has a plan for the property. You'd want to know what the plan is going in. Or if we're going to, if we're, if we're going to RFP it, we'd put it out to a public bid. If you're going to, if you're going to, I think if we're going to promote it as a, as a buildable lot, and I've suggested this past, then we'd want to go out to RFP and get the highest bid, and for tax, just go to, for our budget reasons. And, but if it's going to be used for a specific use related to the people who live around that property, then I think I should relay that to you.
Is that a question through you? Is that a question that the Real Property Task Force wrestles with? Or is that a question that, that the administration deals unilaterally by itself?
Yeah.
I mean, how does that work?
We usually get inquiries about the use of properties, and then we'll, we'll review the property, as you said, to see what's the highest and best use.
Who's "we"? The group formerly known as the Real Property Task Force?
The group formerly known as the Real Property Task Force.
And then they get together, and they meet, and then they figure out what's the best use or whatever. And then, so, so to answer the question that the council president is asking here, that's going to require, it seems to me, before the next city council meeting, a convening of the, what was formerly known as the Real Property Task Force to find out what exactly is that they're trying to do here? Is that, is that what we're doing here?
Right, unless, unless there's, unless there's nothing selected, and it's just a, we just want to, you know, do an outreach and see what's, you know, who wants to use the property and what the recommended use would be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council president.
Well, this, 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 this item was tabled back in July two thousand twenty-three. About eighteen months ago. If nothing happened within that time, they wouldn't be asking to declare surplus. So let's assume and think logically that something happened that we don't know. And if something happened that we don't know, since they asking me as a councillor to take a vote on something, I would like to know why.
Fair enough.
I mean, I don't think it's unfair after eighteen months being studied by the, by somebody asking us to declare this as a surplus. I don't want to be a smart peep, but that's the reality.
And through you, Madam Chair, I, are we done? It's fine. I'm not going to go back and forth. I think I made my, I'll ease up.
Counselor, by all means, no. I would love to hear what you have to say. Okay, we already have a motion on the table for approval, and Counselor Fidelina Santiago seconded it. So are we moving forward with the votes? Okay. I believe we're going to have to do a roll call on this one. Fair enough. Call the roll.
Council President, do you mind?
I will, yes.
I will vote. Who was that?
She's the last.
Council of Santiago?
Yes.
Council of Planes?
Yes.
Oh, it's okay. It's all right. I vote no.
Chair Marmo?
No. So it moves forward?
Was that all the items that you wanted? Okay, thank you so much. I believe this is it. Motion to, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor say aye, and the ayes have it.
Monday, February 24th, it is now 7:22 PM. Voting members to my right, we have the Vice Chair of the Committee, Counsel Vivian Marmo, and Council President Giovanni Rodriguez. And Counsel Luzon is walking in. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting of the Budget and Finance Committee is being conducted both in person and via remote participation. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may either attend here at the City Council Chamber or use any of our social media accounts pages. At this moment, can you please join me in the pledge? Counselors, can I have a motion to, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 12, 2025 budget meeting?
So much.
Most have remained properly seconded. Discussion on the minutes. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, and the ayes have it. First item under new businesses, item 48-25, requests to expend grant funds in the amount of $150,000 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Brian Crisis Intervention Program, brought to us by our Director of Support Services, Director Shepherd Deon, the floor.
Good evening, City Councils. My name is Rosa Shepherd, Director of Support Services of Lawrence Police Department. I am here alongside with Sergeant Bulio, who oversee the gang unit. I am happy to share that we had applied for the crisis intervention grant for $150,000 in collaboration with the UTEC program, which is located in Lowell at this moment, and we have been awarded this grant for $150,000. Under this grant, we propose a project called the Lawrence Francularity Project. This initiative is specifically designed to target the gang and gun violence, specifically in the Tower Hill neighborhood. This is, this grant and this initiative with the Lawrence Police Department and the UTEC goes beyond the violence that we unfortunately suffer here in the City of Lawrence. And one primary objective is to assist our youth in staying out of trouble and provide them with positive alternatives involving the gang violence.
Thank you. I'm going to pass it over to Counsel Marmo, because it appears that this area specifically is in her district, in case she has any comments or questions. Counsel Marmo.
To start, to start off, is this the first time we're applying for this grant? Or we've received this grant in previous years?
We have received a similar grant in previous year, but the grant, almost the same grant, again, in collaboration with UTEC, but we utilized this grant for the South Lawrence East area.
South Lawrence.
South Lawrence East, yeah. So we're taking that, the same project, but we're moving it to the Tower Hill neighborhood.
In previous years, how does it normally work? Do you guys have data, keep track of how many individuals? I don't want to call them students, because I'm assuming it's not just students, but how many individuals this program has come into contact with? How, you know, what is the story behind it? Was there any success? I'm sorry. Was there any success to those individuals that you did come into contact with? Like, I'm actually intrigued.
Sure. So I'm Sergeant Bulio from Lawrence Police Department. I'm in charge of the drug unit and the gang unit. So like Ms. Shepherd said, Director Shepherd said that we've had this grant in the past with UTEC. We had it for, we had a two-year grant previously. It was 100, I believe it was $160,000, and it was $80,000 per year that we used. At the time when we started doing the research on where we should focus on the directed patrols, at the time, the stadiums were where the majority of that violence was. We statistically went through all the different areas, and that's where we wanted to focus on. So for the two years, we did not only the directed patrols, we also did community engagement with UTEC. Obviously, they have street workers out on the street. We, I'll go through a bunch of the stuff that we did with them. When that grant ended this year, they got with myself and with Director Shepherd, and they were able to get another grant. This time around, we wanted to focus on the north side of the city. We figured what they try to do with the grant, it's a one-mile radius. But when we did the one at the stadiums, it covered the stadiums, it covered Exodus Street, North Parish Road, all the way out to the South Common, Lawrence High School, all the parks, the Shawshene Park, the O'Connell, Shawshene Castello, the Kane Park. So we hit all the parks, too. And again, it's directed patrols, it's park and walks, it's going through the stadiums, it's helping out with dismissal at Lawrence High School. We did backpack distributions with UTEC, we did a peace rally. We did another one that started at Central Catholic and it went to the south side of the city after we had that incident with the young students at the park across from Lawrence High School last year. So we did a bunch of rallies with them, and then obviously, we did some enforcement part. This year, when we started looking at the grant, we chose Tower Hill because we're able to, we're able to attack two different areas over there. We're able to attack, you know, we could focus on the Hancock projects. We could focus on the Essex streets as well. It gets us lower Tower Hill, it gets us a handful of schools in that area. It gets us the lower end of Broadway. So it gives us a really good radius on attacking certain areas there, too. So again, it's the Crisis Intervention Program, and it's in partnership with UTEC. It focuses on hotspot, directed patrols in hotspot neighborhoods, as well as, like I said, the community engagements, the park and walks, motor vehicle stops, school dismissals. For the last two years, it focused on the stadiums, like I said. Hit all the schools, hit all the parks over there. Obviously, when the nice weather comes, the Common Park was very, very busy with the basketball courts there. The park across near the high school was very, very busy in the summer. So it worked out good. We were able to focus on those areas. As far as our Part I crimes, the homicides, aggravated assaults, robberies, felony larcities, and motor vehicle theft, it all decreased significantly. Again, it was a lot of money to put into directed patrols. And, you know, just getting out of the car and walking and doing park and walks, they loved it. You know, it's, everybody knew we were out there, so it was good. So over those two years, so the numbers are gonna, the numbers are high. But again, this was two years. This year, it's only going to be a year. So over those, the two years that we did it, we made, we executed over 1,100 extra checks. That's between pulling up to the stadiums or pulling up to the high school, pulling up to the pool, pulling up to the South Lawrence Common. So that's extra checks, park and walks, and motor vehicle stops. It was over 1,100 of them. There were 28 arrests, nine search warrants that were executed in that radius. We seized over 1,000 grams of fentanyl, 91 grams of cocaine, and nine firearms. So it was, you know, very successful. We have a great relationship with the street workers from UTEC. You know, there's a lot of times they'll reach out to us when they hear of stuff going on, and/or we'll reach out to them if, you know, we have any violence in the city, and especially the gang violence with the younger individuals. They have, their home base obviously is in Lowell, but they have an office, too, on Marsden Street in Lawrence. You know, they have the, you know, they give the kids a lot of jobs. We have a great working relationship with them. And I think part of this grant, 150,000, I believe, 75, you know, we're going to get 75,000 of it, and the other 75,000, I believe UTEC will be putting on another street worker or two, which will focus directly on Lawrence.
Based on what I'm reading in terms of the project summary, this is more of an intervention
Correct.
outreach program. So when you're mentioning arrests, is that, do you mind getting into detail in terms of, is this as a result of the program?
No, no. So what happens is, so the one we did with them a couple, you know, for the last two years was a little bit different. This was more of an intervention. But there are times that we will, we will go over there. So the arrests are, we might have to, you know, we might be doing an extra shift on the directed patrol, and something may have happened in that area where we're going to go and we're going to take it. So patrol's not tied up. Just because, you know, we may be at the Common, at the South Lawrence Common, watching a basketball game with the kids and this and that, and then something may have happened at the stadiums. So we're going to shoot over there and, you know, take care of what is going on over there, because we were already on that shift for that directed patrol, so we would take that. So obviously, but the goal is not to, you know, the goal is to do the basketball games, go outside. You know, we did handball, we did a handball tournament, we passed out backpacks. You know, that's what the goal of it is, the peace rallies. But there are incidents, God bless you, there are incidents that, you know, we may be doing a park and walk in the stadiums, and a car may come in, and we have to make enforcement. And 28 arrests in two years is, you know, 14 a year, and it's not really a lot.
When you say 1,100 checks, is this people that you come into contact with?
No, some of it is, yes. But a lot of times, you know, we'll go to the stadiums and we'll do, get on the radio, "Could you put us off at the stadiums? Could you put us off at Lawrence High Dismissal?" So we'll stand there while they're being dismissed. We'll go to the South Lawrence Common, put us off at the South Lawrence Common. So every time we're calling it in and we're going off, we try to do, you know, 10 of, if we do a four-hour block, we're trying to at least hit 10 or 15 spots. Put us off at the pool, we'll stay at the pool for about a half an hour, engage with the kids at the pool for a half an hour. So those are the extra checks. So I guess it does have engagement, too, because we're going off and, you know, we'll get out of our cars or we'll go into, you know, at the Higgins Pool or any of the parks, the Shawshene Park, and watch them play handball or whatnot.
You guys building a rapport with these individuals?
Yep.
Okay.
So, yes.
My last question, I promise, I know, I promise.
Smirking, because the sergeant was like, "Yep," and then he's like, "Yeah."
No, that's why I'm here, so, no, no.
I'm intrigued in terms of, I feel like when it comes to, like, gangs, we have to try to infiltrate the middle schools as much as possible, because that's like the most vulnerable, it's our most vulnerable group. vulnerable, um, it's all our, our most vulnerable group, uh, and members in our community that you could easily be influenced.
Absolutely.
It's joining, uh, these gangs. So how is this program kind of taking a focus on reaching the, the younger generation?
So what happens is, so UTEC is involved in the school department. UTEC, they'll go, um, I want to say it's at least once a week there in Lawrence High. They'll go, they'll go to the CAF, they'll do, um, um, their thing at the high school. They do hit some of the other schools too. Obviously, you have Sergeant Caraballo and the, and the school resource officers who have done an unbelievable job, and I'm not saying that for any other reason, but they've done an unbelievable job, um, in the schools. We do a lot of, in fact, I have another one coming up. We do a lot of, um, a lot of talks at the schools. We'll have teachers reach out to us and we'll put on a gang talk or we'll put on a drug talk, uh, depending on, um, on the audience that we have is depending on what we get into. With the younger kids, we're getting into why we should not be involved in gangs. With the older kids, we're really getting into, you know, time to, you know, start thinking about getting out of a gang. So it, it, it does focus on that as well. I mean, we, we've, we've done, I, I couldn't even tell you how many talks at the schools and whatnot. We try not to go into the schools too much, the gang unit ourselves, um, unless if we're invited to. The school resource officers are really handling all of that right now, um, unless if we're invited to come in and do a whole gang presentation, which we, we do all the time. But UTEC, the UTEC street workers are definitely in the schools.
And my, my line of question. Um, in terms of tracking, would like to see details in terms of, uh, the amount of individuals that, uh, you guys are actually, um, having success stories in, um, getting them out of gangs?
Sure.
You know, are we following up with them? Did we, you know, did we help them find, uh, jobs after graduating high school?
Yep.
You know, stuff like that. I, I'm intrigued to knowing how we were able to, you know, how we were able to contribute to changing their life.
So if this, if this gets approved tonight and goes to the full council, I believe, uh, we'll have somebody from UTEC at the full council meeting and they could actually really touch on that because they're, they're the ones. So if we, if we make an arrest of an individual that falls between their, their age group, you know, seventeen to twenty-five, what we do is refer them to, uh, to UTEC. So I'll get in touch with the UTEC workers that handle Lawrence. I'll say, hey, we, you know, we just, we came in contact with so-and-so last night or we had to place so-and-so under arrest last night. And then UTEC, a lot of times, they'll follow up the following day. They may go to the arraignment, they may get in touch with that person. So they, they do a really good, a, a really good job at, at that. They probably, we work probably the closest with them out of, out of all of the street workers. No, I'm, I'm here, so whatever you have.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion to send this up as a favorable recommendation? Motion has been made by Council Marmo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Luzon, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. See you next week. Next item, uh, next and last item under new business is item sixty-four dash twenty-five, appropriation transfer from Stabilization Fund Reserve for litigation to judgment. Brought to us by City Attorney Hooton, but we have attorney, uh, attorney.
Chair, members of the council, I'm Kevin, Kevin Foley. I'm the First Assistant City Attorney.
You know I know this.
Here for, I know, I'm here for Attorney Hooton this evening, who made this, uh, request for the, uh, transfer, the appropriation transfer from the, our litigation stabilization fund, uh, to our settlement fund, our judgment or settlement fund, uh, in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. What he tells me, that's, that's enough money to ca- carry the, us through the rest of this fiscal year. The rationale behind that is that, that money historically, and I look back to two thousand nineteen, we've always budgeted, uh, two hundred twenty-five thousand going back to nineteen in our, in our settlement judgment account. Last year, for whatever reason, it was, it was, uh, balanced out at zero. So anytime we do anything like that, we have to come before the council. And I, I remember coming before the council earlier this year on a settlement of a case and I think Attorney Hooton did as well, so, uh, we don't have anything right now that we're, that's pending settlement, but it's a cumbersome process. Not that we don't like coming here before the council, um, but it's also cumbersome because we really can't talk about in, in a public forum, we can talk about it in executive session, some of the cases that we're working on. But as a, as a logistical part, we come to the council, the council sends it to, well, first of all, we have to, any settlement or any sort of offer of compromise, we'd have to run it by the mayor's office, get the approval there, get it onto the city council agenda, usually gets sent to one of the subcommittees. We appear before the subcommittee. If we get favorable action, it goes back before the full council. And then if that's voted on by the full council favorably, it would go to the mayor to be approved and then that whole process takes somewhere around sixty to seventy days. The, the issue with that for us is that sometimes we have a case where we could settle a case for a lot less money if we could give them a check next week, you know what I mean? Rather than have to wait sixty days. If they want to wait sixty days, they might want, uh, twice the amount of money because they have to wait for the money. So it makes it a little bit more nimble for us. And as I say, I went back to two thousand nineteen, uh, and saw that we had budgeted two hundred twenty-five thousand. Some years, we didn't use all of that money, but some years, we exceeded, uh, that amount of money. And I talked with the CAFO today and, uh, she told me that there's plenty of money in a litigation stabilization account to transfer these funds over to, um, to our settlement or judgment account for these purposes. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that the, uh, that the council might have for me.
Any questions for Attorney Foley? Council Luzon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So when the city has been sued, uh, isn't that a public information? And once it get, get to the court, it's public information?
Well, settlements are usually not public information. After they're done, they, they can be subpoenaed or void and stuff like that, some aspects of them, but some of them can be withheld for different reasons. Uh, but the case, you're right, Council Luzon, when a case is filed in a, in a lawsuit, uh, that's a public record in the court system. But the, 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 the stuff that's going on between the parties in terms of trying to compromise or resolve the matter is not something that's done in public. I, I, and I, I like that question because one of the things that I suggested to Attorney Hooton is that I think that the legal department, I'd be glad to be part of this, at minimum on a quarterly basis, in executive session, uh, with the city council, we should meet with you and give you updates on any pending legisla- any, any pending litigation that's going on. Just an update. I, and I know that he was gonna be here last week with the full council, but, um, because of the time of the year, there were some counselors, two or three counselors who were, who were not feeling well and some members, so they, we pushed that off until next week. But that's something that I told him because quite frankly, I'm the one that's involved. I have appearances in most of these cases. I'm happy to come into executive session and, and talk about, you know, sort of the given, the give and take, the back and forth about where we see the case going, what's a good way, and, you know, there are reasons why you settle cases, not least of which is to control the outcome of the case, something that it's affordable, uh, to the city or something that would not cause us any further liability down the road, puts an end to it, you know, rather than living with it for two or three years with an uncertainty there. So I, I, I'd be happy to be part of that. I think that ought to be something that we do on a quarterly basis, if not, if not more often. But for purposes of, of tonight, we're just asking for a favorable recommendation for this transfer from this litigation stabilization account, which has money in it, over to our settlement or judgment account, so that we can be a little bit more nimble about how we handle these, uh, how these cases.
Yeah, and, and, no, thank you for explaining that and, and, and we know that you're here for that, but also, um, as a counselor, I receive, uh, questions, uh, about how many suits this, the city is, is receiving. And I know that some of this information, especially when it has to do with settlement, it has to be, uh, deal with in an executive section, but I would like to know how many suits we have received in the last year, uh, in amount. I mean, maybe, well, it's public information when it's, if anyone is suing the city, it's already public information.
Yeah, we, we certainly can, can give you a listing of the, uh, suits. And when you say suits, do you mean administrative proceedings to before the various boards? Like, um, there are many administrative agencies that, that these things are not filed in a, in a courtroom, but filed before the Mass Commission Against Discrimination, for instance, or the Civil Service Commission, or the Labor Relations Board, or, or, uh, something to that effect?
Anything that has to do with the city, uh, potentially paying an amount of money?
Yeah.
That is affecting our budget, so that I would like to know if, if it's possible, if it's public information. But I mean, we, as a counselor, I receive, uh, actually, I just received a question an hour ago about in a specific department, but I, that I will email, uh, you, uh, and get our information by email. But that, thank you so much for clarif- for the clarification.
No problem.
About the difference in settlement and suing.
I, I will say that for the most part, that everything that's come in since I've been here last year, I've been involved with most of it. There, there are cases that were, um, before my time that were, that are with outside council, um, various outside council that you, you've heard me talk about when I've appeared before. And so, but we, we certainly can give you an update and I don't know if that is going to go back on the agenda for next week or not. I, I offered to Attorney Hooton, I'd be happy to accompany him to give you an update on what's happening with the cases, including the list of what we have pending right now.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you so much, Attorney. Council Marmo.
Attorney, would you be able to publicly state how many pending settlements we have? Like, what's the number?
We, we don't have anything right now that's pending settlement. We, we always have ongoing discussions. I had an on, I had a discussion last week about a case that's active in, both in the court and, and with an administrative agency. And there's, there's still a back and forth going on with that, but there is nothing right now that's, uh, pending settlement. And we have, we also have a significant case that I think that Attorney Hooton was gonna talk with you about last week in executive session. And that's why I say I offered to him, I, I, I'm intimately involved with that case and I'd be happy to come with him for that meeting.
I would say plan on for next Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's no problem with that. I don't just say it, I'm happy to do that.
As you mentioned earlier, I... Council President can correct me if I'm wrong, but we did have a lot of members out sick last meeting, so that's why it's, it's some, something important like that, we want to make sure that we have a full council for you guys. All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion to send this up with a favorable recommendation? Motion has been made by Council Marmo, seconded by the Council President, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it.
Thank you very much. See you next week.
Thank you, Attorney Foley. Counselors, I lied when I said no, no tabled items, my apologies. So first, I'm gonna take Ms. Sue Fink. You sent us an email earlier today regarding two items. Uh, you asked about, you asked for item four forty, forty-four dash twenty-five to remain tables because the, the director is out on a conference, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Counselors, can I have a motion to send another invitation to Director Pimentel for the next Budget and Finance Meeting? Motion has been made by the Council President, seconded by Council Marmo, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can, can, can I have a motion to table item forty-four dash? Motion has been made, seconded by Council President, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Can I have a motion to send correspondence to Council, uh, to Director Pimentel for the next Budget and Finance Meeting? Motion has been made by the Council President, seconded by Council Marmo, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Thank you. Let me fit, let me finish, let me, let me at least say thank you. Motion to table has been made by the Council President, seconded by Council Luzon, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Thank you. And then you met, you sent us a memo regarding requesting to withdraw item. Can I, uh, can I have a motion to untable item three oh three dash twenty-four? Three oh three dash twenty-four, second page, um, second item. Motion has been made by the, by Councilor Marmo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Luzon, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Uh, Ms., Ms. Fink, you have four.
So yes, I am requesting to withdraw this particular item. Um, we, um, are going to be reallocating some of the funds that were in this initial appropriation transfer to fund item twenty-two B twenty-five.
Item, hold on. Item twenty-two B appropriation transfer. Okay, yep. And this has to do with the follow-up that we had last Budget and Finance Meeting?
Correct.
With the Laton Boxing?
Correct.
That we requested you guys to come together and figure out, okay. Well, just give me one second. Ms. Fink, what, what I'm going to request, uh, for the next, for the next memo that you, that you sent us, can you make sure to always see Teresa and our city clerk in case either or is, is out? Because if we don't see it, they will at least see it and make sure that we have, um, printed copies for the meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Council President.
Madam Chair, I just want to, uh, to have, like, uh, perhaps you're gonna have to update the, the other item with the proper amount and the proper, uh, uh, the proper amounts related from this item that is gonna go to the other item, correct? That is gonna go to twenty-two B?
So it's, um, the funding that was in for the airport, from the airport, is gonna be moved over to fund twenty-two B?
Um, the item, we just see five hundred and eleven thousand.
Right.
So the entire amount is gonna go to the other item?
No, just a hundred and...
I'm just saying.
A hundred and ten thousand is gonna go to twenty-two B.
Okay, I'm just saying, you know, update the other item through a memo, saying, oh, the new, that this item gonna correspond, now the amount of money that is gonna go on twenty-two B is gonna, is gonna be this amount, uh, due to the fact that we transferring money from the APER, which was on, uh, item, uh, three oh three twenty-four, now to item twenty, twenty-two B, correct? Am I following what you're trying to do?
Yes. I think.
I'm saying, I'm saying.
So you, maybe, maybe I'm not... So you'd like me to s...
Yeah, hold on a second. Just give us an updated amount that is gonna correspond to item twenty-two B, which right now, we have a hundred and seventeen thousand. So you're gonna add portion of the item three oh three twenty-four to item twenty-two B. So that need to be reflected on the other item. For that to happen, you need to, uh, update the item twenty-two B. And this one is gonna be withdrawn.
Did the memo not get into your packet that I sent Teresa earlier today?
And so, so that's, so that's why the email that I received does not include Teresa and, 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 or I, uh, our city clerk, but it does include, or, or any of the committee members. Um, so we did receive a memo earlier today that explains what the Council President is trying to, to, uh, to, to suggest. So particularly, from the Laton Boxing Gym Youth Boxing Program line item, twenty thousand dollars would go into dock number twenty-two B slash, dash twenty-five. Specifically from the airport, um, a hundred, a hundred ten thousand dollars would go towards dock twenty-two B dash twenty-four, which totals a hundred, a hundred thirty thousand dollars.
Correct.
And that is correct. So that is the new amount, um, that will be transferred from, from the APER funds that we have here under three oh three dash twenty-four.
Yes.
Okay. You guys follow that? Let me, um, I should have, let me...
No, I have, I have a copy of the memo. I thought that...
Okay.
It was gonna, I thought Teresa said she was gonna put it in your packets.
Okay, no, we don't, we don't have it here. Yeah, 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 yeah.
So just make sure when you send correspondence to the committee to add everybody, that way we... So just make sure when you send correspondence to the committee to add everybody. That way, we, everybody has it.
Absolutely. I'll do so in the future.
She's, they're making copies. So just bear with us for two seconds, or a minute. Is that the only, are these the only two items that you have for us today?
Yes.
So then I think we could also withdraw item 22B-25. But I have a question about that actually for you. So we're going to untable it. That was the question I was going to say.
So Counselors, maybe I misunderstood what my directions were from the last meeting. I thought you asked me to write a new memo describing how I was going to fund that $130,000. Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure I did what I was asked to do.
You got it.
So I did have correspondence with Laton Boxing, and they felt they could use $60,000 out of the $80,000. So I'm working on reviewing the information he sent me to write a contract.
Perfect.
Yes, keep us posted when they actually, when they got everything they need, so we can go ahead and visit them.
Of course.
And that way they can have communication with us.
Yeah, I was out of the office for several days last week, and I wasn't able to get to it.
I'm sorry. It was included. It was, so your memo was included. It was included under the wrong item.
Oh.
But they're both kind of intertwined, so I can see where the confusion happened. Okay, so Counselors, now that you have this memo in front of you again, are there any further questions or comments for Ms. Fink? Seeing none, can I have a motion to withdraw item, withdraw item 303-24? Transfer of $511,000, $511,000, $511,000 of ARPA funds to First Time Home Buyers Program from various accounts. Sorry, it's been a really long night for me, a really long day for me. Motion to withdraw.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counsel Luzon, seconded by... So move. Motion has been made by Counsel Marmo, seconded by Counsel Luzon. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye, the ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Fink.
Thank you.
Today is one of those days for sure. All right, so next we have, yeah, you all said, that was the only thing you asked, right, for to...
303? So we're not going to do 22B? No?
No, not that one. Right now, for now.
Okay. So I'll come back again?
Okay, yeah. Oh, you're ready for it?
For 22B?
22...
Are you here for that?
All right, so can I have a motion to untable 22B-25 appropriation transfer in the amount of $300,000 from various accounts to the Childcare Circuit? Motion been made by Counsel Marmo, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Luzon. All those in favor say aye. Aye, the ayes have it, Ms. Fink.
Okay. Since our last meeting, I had a meeting with Octavian Spanner, and we found alternative funding to fund the $130,000 remaining on this particular document. You have a memo that says we're taking $20,000 from Laton Boxing, which they will not be needing for their contract, and we're taking $110,000 from the airport fund, which they declined to use.
So, Madam Manager.
Counsel President.
Just to reflect the proper amount on the item, which is right now is $300,000, but it really $120,000. That's what it should reflect, because we change, I mean, we split the item into $170,000, which we sent out to the full council.
And approved.
And $130,000, which is item 22B. And we have the $300,000. So it's a typo, just a matter of changing the amount. And the source of the funds is going to change, which is going to be the one that she just stated.
So I believe last time, last time something like this occurred, I recall the city clerk advising that because that is the official name of the item. It's not, it's still going to reflect $300,000, but the actual document supporting the item will correct the amount. Now, this is the last, it's been a while, could be wrong, but your feedback is noted. And we're just going to continue. So now that we have the amounts, you're requesting this committee to also to withdraw this item as well? To change it?
To send it up.
To send it up?
To send it up.
Okay. Can I have a motion to send up 22B-25 as a favorable recommendation to the full council? Motion has been made properly, seconded. Discussion. Counsel President.
Just make sure that, just, Ms. Fink, just make sure that the proper parties when it comes to administrating the program are here, so they can give us a further explanation as to how many people they're going to be serving on that program.
Okay, so you want the director from the Childcare Circuit to come again? Okay.
Just to give us an update, so, you know, how many times we're going to expand it up and take an opportunity to probably create awareness about the program that is about to end. At the full council.
Okay. She was, yeah, she appeared at the last full council meeting, right.
Okay. All right, noted. Pat, can you make sure that there is a sign note for item 22B-24 that states that the amount is $130,000 and not $300,000? I know that we, what I said earlier about supporting documents, but to make sure that that is there with it. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye, the ayes have it. Thank you. See you next week.
Trying to prevent any confusion, I thought.
No, that's okay. I don't think it was you. I think it's just Monday, and it's been a long workday, too. Director, can I have a motion to untable item, sorry, I lied. Item 42-25, authorization to expand $125,215 from the Housing Choice Grant from the EOHLC Planning Grant for the Reviviendo Gateway 2.0. It's under Old Table Business from February 4th.
Good evening, Deanna Caffey.
Well, we haven't untabled it yet. And I have something to say, actually, about this. Can I, item 42-25. Dash 25. You're welcome. No, it's there. It's there, but... Can I have a motion to untable? Motion has been made. Is there a second? Seconded by the Counsel President. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. So, all right, so here's the thing about this. I mean, we did not receive any communication that you were going to be here tonight. We don't have any, and I'm assuming you have it tonight, but as you can see, I have committee members going crazy looking for this item. And we don't have anything, we have the memo that was sent to the Counsel President, but on January 30th. But other than that, no communication whatsoever that you guys were going to be here tonight.
I apologize for that. We were working on this, we planned to do a PowerPoint presentation for the two projects.
42, okay. So we didn't even receive a copy of the PowerPoint presentation either? Is there a timeline for this? Like, is there anything specific that he deadlines any, so there is no, okay. Unless, Counselors, unless you, I mean, if they have the presentation now, if you're ready for it, if you want time, I mean...
If you want the presentation, it'll take 10 minutes, 15 minutes, and you can do the presentation, then table it. That would maybe give you some room for questions.
Okay, let me... Can you get... All right. No, they have to turn it on. They have to. Can you let them know that we need the projector, Pat? Can you let them know that we need the projector? Can you let them know that we need the projector on? Thank you.
Technical aspect taken care of. This doesn't look like it's going to work.
Is this, are you having 1080? It's way beyond 1080. You want me to put 1080?
Yeah.
Do you want to put a ticket in for that or something?
All right.
We're going to keep this, we're going to retable this item. We're not going to untable the next item.
Yeah, I do have some documents. One of the documents is Will de Pimentel. She's out of town, so I was, and she'll be back in two weeks. So we'll be able to get you all the supporting documents.
Either way, this is from February 4th. This item is from, we are February 24th. Like, this should have been submitted. These documents should have been submitted. So... Yeah, so we'll see you next Budget and Finance meeting. Can I have a motion to retable item 42-25? Motion has been made properly. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Luzon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Now, Counselors, we have two more items. I'm going to ask the Counsel President to recuse himself for this, because, due to a potential conflict of interest. And we're doing it now, because last time I did not have quorum to do this, so we're doing it now. Now you have to come back for the final. Can I have a motion to untable item 40-25 appropriation transfer in the amount of $100,000 from the airport account to new project account for mandated safety easements? 4025. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Counselors, we did have the airport manager here with us last time. Actually... No. Yeah, Pat, can you get, can you get Bill Collins, please? Bill Collins, can you ask him to come out, please?
Hi.
Yeah, turn it on, thank you.
Thank you. Bill, we have, we just untabled item forty twenty-five appropriation transfer in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars from the airport account to, to the new project account for mandated safety easements.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, the, uh, number, okay, uh, forty twenty-five.
Yes.
Right. We discussed this in our last airport commission meeting. This has to do with, uh, part of our master plan?
Sorry. Uh, sorry, I wasn't prepared to speak on this. I'm surprised the manager didn't let me know. He usually is very good. He might be at a conservation ma- uh, meeting in North Danover. But, um, we have to clear trees and we were supposed to be buying some land, uh, for our approaches to our main runways. I believe that's what this is for, the hundred thousand. We also, at our last meeting, discussed some of the groundwork for the new terminal. This might also be going to that project. I'm not exactly sure, unfortunately. But it does say to the new project account for mandated safety easements. So I would assume that's for the, uh, new terminal building.
I'm going to read what we have in the memo.
Thank you.
Um, this memo was sent to the Council President on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. The Lawrence Municipal Airport would like to start a safety mandated easement project this fiscal year as opposed to waiting until next fiscal year as planned. This project is supported by the FFA Mass Dot Aer- Aer- uh, I can't pronounce.
Aeronautics.
Aeronautics Division, qualified to receive federal and state grant funding with a five percent local share. I would like to request a retained earnings transfer in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to a new project account for this anticipated cost.
Okay, that sheds a little light on it, but, um, I do know that we approved it at the airport level unanimously, so it is either for our new terminal building or for easements related to tree clearing and approaches to our runways. We, we also have an ongoing drainage issue with Chow Street, North Danover. The, the town is not helping us out with it all. We're paying for all that work, and this may also have to go with that. I'm not exactly sure which of those three areas this particular amount of money is for. Sorry, I wasn't prepared for this. I.
That's okay.
Uh, I don't know if it's time critical. Uh, is there any chance to send this forward to the, uh, full council and make sure the managers?
I'm okay with, I feel comfortable sending it as a committee report, uh, because the, last time the airport manager did stay throughout a lengthy meeting, and then when it came to, to this particular item, come to find out.
You didn't have the six votes.
I didn't, no, I didn't have, only had a, a three-member committee, and the Council President needed to recuse himself. So we didn't, I did not have quorum at all for this item. And now that we, I do have a full committee, I wanna make sure that.
I think it's very possible too with the city, uh, your confidential secretary taking her school vacation last week, that maybe he didn't get the notice to come.
Oh, no, no, it's, it's, no, we're all set. I, now, that's just me. Uh, if the rest of the committee, I'm not sure how you guys feel, but that's how, I'm, I'm okay with sending it up as a committee report, at least.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Motion to move forward to full council as a committee report.
Motion has been made by Council Marmo, seconded by Council Luzon. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
One more, that's the case, one more. Councilors, can I have a, a motion to untable item forty-three dash twenty-five? Pat, you have that? Forty-three dash twenty-five? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, forty-one, forty-one dash twenty-five.
Correct. Yeah, I'm more familiar with this. We discussed this at the meeting last.
Hold on, hold on, it's, it's not untaled yet. Um, can I have a motion to untable forty-one dash twenty-five? Motion's made by Council Marmo, seconded by Council Luzon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. So item forty-one dash twenty-five is the assurance of grants, assurances and authorized to expend in the amount of three hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred ninety dollars for the Mass Dot Aeronautic Division. Did I get it right this time?
Very good.
Division grant. Let me tell you, surprisingly, my first language is actually Spanish, and even though I'm forget, I'm forgetting the Spanish, I still have issues with English terms.
No, this is, uh, for our new.
Commissioner, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, this for the new terminal project, and this is, uh, the first capital outlay, so that, uh, the architect already has the renderings. We're halfway into the project, or a third of the way on paper, and this will, um, be the grant that we're getting from Mass DOT. By the way, the new terminal building funding is gonna be, I believe it's eighty percent for FAA, fifteen percent state, and five percent out of our retained earnings. So it's, it's a good deal for the airport, and, uh, this is gonna assure that our building is gonna be the next one built, the next terminal built at the state. Really an administrative building.
Any questions or comments? We do have, uh, the award notice from Mass Dot that goes over in length, the award, the obligations from the city side, city side, uh, the layout, it is signed. Um, I'm noticing it's signed by your chair. It does it, will it be signed by the mayor after the council approves this?
I believe, uh, this has to go through purchasing, and after the bids are opened, it'll go through that process and at some point, I don't know if the mayor signs it or the purchasing agent, but.
It says mayor, of, mayor, city of all eyes here. Okay, that's fair. Councilors, any questions or comments? Seeing none. Able, uh, can I have a motion to send this up with a favorable recommendation? Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Probably seconded. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So motion.
Motion has been made. It's a favorable recommendation. Yeah. All those. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.